Noncompliance. That means this quarry could remain out of compliance indefinitely, and as long as they're reporting it to the department, that's fine. And that is not an effective enforcement strategy. There's no discussion on contaminants generated by blasting or the operations of heavy machinery. There's no discussion in the permit of how the quarry blasting could affect the stability of the karst topography features, and we've already heard about sinkholes in the area. There's no discussion on the consequences of stream stability, sediment transport, or the hydraulic conductivity of the limestone aquifer. And there are no requirements for the specific location of grab samples. So Cusa Riverkeeper submits this speech tonight, our original comments from 2023, and an analysis of this proposed permit, because we think it does not provide adequate protection for the people and the environment. The analysis submitted tonight was conducted by Dr. Stephen Emmerman, a world-renowned expert in hydraulic modeling, geophysical interpretation, geostatistics, and scientific transflation. Other members of the Cusa Riverkeeper team will be speaking more about the monitoring requirements and permit limitations, but thank you for your prompt attention to this matter, and thank you to all of you. Thank you for being here. Thanks.
Our next speaker will be Jake Lassiter, following Kim Lucas Allison. And I would like to just remind you that anyone who has already signed up to speak, if you would like to speak, please visit the table at the right hand register. Thank you.
I'm Jake Lassiter with Cusa Riverkeeper. First off, thank y'all so much for allowing us to come and speak here. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for also coming and listening and giving your voice as well. Thank you to the elected officials of Oxford for showing up as well, and thank you to everyone in this room for coming out here to voice your opinion as well. Like I said, my name is Jake Lassiter, and I am the watershed specialist for Cusa Riverkeeper. I'm here today to give my comments, informed by my own research and an expert analysis, to the department in the hopes for a more detailed permit that considers all that is necessary to protect the public, the land, the air, and last but certainly not least, water. Every issuance of an NPDS permit brings potential threats to a waterway. The department's duty is to assign outfall limitations with monitoring requirements based on best practices, state and federal regulations, and certain water quality standards. With all of this in mind, the purpose of these permit limitations and requirements is to protect the public and environment from harmful discharges of effluent into waterways. This permit for the Highway 431 quarry is nothing more than a boilerplate document that has the exact same limitations as a quarry five counties over. I have looked at enough permits to know that the calculations are the exact same for these limitations as well. How can two quarries that are different in size have the same monitoring requirements and limitations? There is no explanation within the permit as to why there are no limitations on any parameters besides total suspended solids and pH. It's my understanding that in a perfect world, they should never discharge anything that would not intentionally be generated, such as pathogens. However, the sources of effluent are from stormwater and mine dewatering. It seems unreasonable to set no limitations on any parameters except for total suspended solids and pH, especially when much about the stormwater and groundwater chemistry are entirely unknown. There is also no mention of limitations on contaminants such as nitrate or ammonium, benzene, toline, or ethylbenzene that could be generated from an onsite blasting or fuel storage. It is unclear as to what information in the NPDS permit constitutes a certification that pollutants are not present in the waste stream, and why the chemicals involved in blasting or the operation of heavy equipment could not potentially be present in the waste stream. If the overarching goal is to protect people and the environment, why not consider all of these potential contaminants? Although the discharge limitations involve a daily minimum pH and a daily maximum pH, daily minima and maxima cannot be assessed by measurements taken only twice a month. Although these discharge limitations involve a monthly average for total suspended solids as well as a daily maximum for total suspended solids, these monthly averages and daily maxima simply cannot be assessed by measurements carried out twice a month. If there are literal limitations on the daily minima and maxima, those limitations should, sorry, those limitations could only be assessed by measurements made hourly or at most every several hours. Why not use a continuous monitoring device that could take these measurements hourly? Could it be so that the facility operators could no longer pick which data they self-report? In addition to the monitoring requirements for pH and total suspended solids, the facility also has expected averages for their discharge. In these averages, biochemical oxygen demand, total iron, total manganese, and total aluminum are factored in. However, these are just expected averages for the outfalls, but there's no explanation as to how they play into the discharge itself. There is also no requirement to do anything except report noncompliance when it occurs. Thus, the quarry could remain out of compliance indefinitely so long as it reports its noncompliance. It's disturbing that the facility can continue discharging while being out of noncompliance. There are no requirements to the locations that the quarry will collect their grab samples from, meaning that the company could avoid, or sorry, the facility could avoid noncompliant measurements simply by collecting samples sufficiently downstream from the outfalls. There should be considerable discussion as to how the possible adverse consequences of effluent discharge will be monitored. There should be considerable discussion as to what actions will be carried out if these adverse consequences occur. There should be discussion as to the circumstances under which, sorry, circumstances under which further quarry dewatering or effluent discharge would be at least temporarily inadvisable, even if the quarry was acting within its permit limitations. Ultimately, it is my belief, and as well as Cusa Riverkeeper's belief, that the department should revisit this proposed permit and provide more detail within the permit as to how noncompliance will be mitigated. It is also our belief that the permit does not consider all aspects of the discharge limitations or the adverse effects that exceeding those limits could have on Chocolaco Creek, Jackson Creek, and the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lucas Allison, and following Mr. Allison will be Reverend Moore.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Allison, and I'm here representing Cusa Riverkeeper.
You can hear me?
I apologize. My name is Lucas Allison, and I'm here representing Cusa Riverkeeper. I wanted to start by thanking all of you who decided to be present tonight to make your concerns known, and I also wanted to thank the department for deciding to give us a space to speak on the proposed issuance of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit for the proposed quarry owned and operated by Pillar Materials. As stated, my name is Lucas Allison, and I'm the field manager for Cusa Riverkeeper. Given my role within my organization, I'd like to address several critical issues found within the draft permit, ranging from concerns about outfall flow rates, a lack of information on water stability, and potential environmental impacts, including blasting effects and threats to endangered species. With this in mind, we are troubled by the lack of rationale and consideration regarding the outfall flow rates in the permit. Currently, there are no flow rate limitations on any listed outfall. The absence of limitations on outfall flow rates raises serious doubts about there being no adverse effects on these receiving streams. It is challenging to believe that no flow rate, regardless of its magnitude, won't have any negative consequences on the quality and stability of Chocolaco and Jackson Creek. Equally concerning is the absence of information on the discharge stream flow ratio. Understanding the volume of discharge our streams can handle is crucial for evaluating the potential impact that these outfalls will have, and without this knowledge, the impacts cannot be anticipated or efficiently corrected. The rate of groundwater flow further compounds the issue, leaving the community in the dark about potential effects on their well water, such as the depletion or a decline of water quality. The uncertainty surrounding flow rates and effluent discharges also means that you cannot accurately assess the potential impact on the physical stability of Chocolaco and Jackson Creek. The physical stability and ecology of Chocolaco and Jackson Creek will unarguably be disrupted by any changes in water flow and the introduction of additional substances through effluent discharges. This lack of clarity prevents an accurate prediction of how the water quality, sediment transport, and overall stability of these creeks may be altered, leaving the community and organizations like ours in a state of uncertainty, unable to anticipate and prepare for the consequences. Furthermore, there is no discussion on how blasting activities associated with the quarry might affect the flow of groundwater and consequently well water. In karst landscapes like ours, blasting activities could alter underground aquifers by creating fractures and new pathways for water to move through, which will affect the availability, quality, and stability of well water sources. Additionally, the risk of sinkhole formation adds to the concerns about the integrity of well water in the surrounding area. Folks that are dependent on well water should not have to be concerned with declining quality or abundance for the sake of another company's profits. Lastly, there appears to be a disregard by ADEM for threatened and endangered species such as the blue shiner. This species, exclusive to only four watersheds worldwide, including Chocolaco Creek, is already at risk. Neglecting to thoroughly assess potential impacts on the blue shiner's habitat and survival, including changes in water temperature, dissolved oxygen, and sediment transport, not only jeopardizes this threatened species, but reflects a common and stark failure to preserve Alabama's biodiversity and uphold environmental standards. In conclusion, these concerns highlight a concerning gap in the department's evaluation and permitting process, and raise questions about the effectiveness of ADEM's oversight. It is clear to me and many others that a comprehensive and transparent assessment of the proposed quarry and its environmental impacts has not been completed. To ensure the fulfillment of your environmental responsibility and to safeguard the long-term welfare of our community, I urge you to not only consider these concerns, but to do what is necessary and correct these oversights. Thank you.
Next, we call Reverend Lynn Wardmore. And following Reverend Moore will be Billy Moore.
Well, he's following me, but he's following me to make sure I don't fall. I'm dizzy now. Hello, I'm Reverend Lynn Wardmore. I live on Deverell Lane in Oxford, and I represent the people.
Do I need to get closer?
I thought I was counting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, little adjustment here. I have to hold it. Okay. I'm Reverend Lynn Wardmore. Thank all the excellent speakers that we have had. I am here to represent the people and to represent God's creation, His people and His creation. I'm speaking against this facility. There's no need for it, and I will show you why there's no need for it. There are around 80 quarries in the state of Alabama in various stages at this time. Alabama leads the nation also in certain lung problems like lung cancer, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, and some other things. And I, now I'm gonna have to get closer to the paper. Three quarries are in and around Calhoun County in Oxford. Vulcan Materials, McCarthy Coldwater, and Speedway Quarries. This is age-related. One of those was used in recent resurface of Highway 431 North-South. One of those three that I named has already been used for resurfacing. The proposed additional rock quarry is close to established residential areas of Calhoun, Cleveland County, Sunny Eve, and Sider Ridge, which I have visited. Also, other areas that may not be aware of this proposed quarry, and that is what I'm afraid of, that I did see some areas that they probably are oblivious. There are a few rock quarry companies across this state wanting permits at this time to quarry rock. I know one at Balmina in Limestone County, and those people are complaining because they feel that they're being picked on because they're lower income, and the rock quarry is to be beside their Methodist church. Does Alabama Department of Environmental Management ever say no to proposed rock quarries? That's what I want to know. Do you ever say no? Just some risk for the area and this new rock quarry, and again, I really appreciate the technology that has been spoken tonight. Those who will be affected by loud blasting, and this is serious, people with post-traumatic stress disorder, that's an issue, and it's related to a trauma that has caused stress, not necessarily a soldier, but most of the time a soldier. It can be even ordinary citizens. Then the children, the elderly, pregnant women, newborn infants, people with heart conditions that are exacerbated by sudden loud noise, and by exacerbated, I mean heart attacks. Also, animals, cattle, chicken, cats, dogs, and wildlife. How will the blasting affect water that's needed for cooking and drinking, bathing, or other activities? That water is from the wells that those people have. Some people do have wells, and they're related, all those activities are related to home. Will blasting impact septic tanks, causing them to crack? I don't know. Are there underground gas lines to homes? Spire, I think is our local gas facility, that may be impacted by close blasting that causes tremors underground. Looking ahead, how will silica impact the quality of meat and milk from cattle that feed on grasses exposed to silica? That has already been mentioned. Or eggs laid by hens that walk around in yards taking on the soil or grass? Now, I will write extensively, I'm gonna send in my comments, especially about silica. It's gonna be sent. Will it be okay like tomorrow? It's gonna be okay if it's sent in tomorrow, right? It's extensive. How will it negatively impact activities of daily living by all residents close to the quarry, whether waiting on the school bus, washing the car, cutting grass, and painting homes, et cetera? Silica being fine particles. All people depend on the quality of their surroundings to sustain them in good health. What some consider minor distractions become major distractions and problems for others. As I said, I will be sending you extensive information on silica. Thank you. Thank you all for your excellent comments.
Mr. Moore, do you plan to speak as well?
He was just, he was just.
And anyone who's recognized to speak, if you've registered, you are allowed to decline. That's not a problem. Next, we're gonna have Mike Henderson from the Oxford City Council. And after Mr. If you could please state your name clearly and who you represent.
Sure, my name's Mike Henderson. I'm with the Oxford City Council. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Oxford City Government. I have with me tonight Councilmember Stephen Waits, Councilmember Charlotte Hubbard. I've just left a council meeting that we just concluded a few moments ago. That's why I'm a little late. I'm sorry I missed previous comments. I don't have a lot, I'm not here to speak on technical knowledge or whatever. I'm here to represent these people sitting back here. That's what I was elected to do, and that's what we were elected to do. The city government of Oxford has passed a resolution to oppose this project. Our city attorney will be writing a letter to ADEM, making you aware that we have passed this resolution, and will also ask you to oppose this project. These people here have made significant investments in their property, in their homes, in this community. We don't want to see these people's property devalued, damaged, or their quality of life decreased. We've worked hard in this community to provide a good quality of life for our citizens. We've built parks and things like that. We have a park that is not too far from this location that is nationally known, nationally recognized. We don't want this project to negatively affect this project, this park. We don't want it to negatively affect these people's homes or devalue their homes. We, you know, we want to make sure that we are here representing these people as a voice for these people and their investment in our community and for the good of our community. I know that sometimes when you have public hearings, you do those out of a necessity. Sometimes you just, you don't really listen. I'm not saying y'all particularly, I'm just saying, public hearings are just a formality. But the formality or whatever, it's, these are real concerns, is what I'm trying to say. I don't have a speech written here, so bear with me a minute here. So, these people have real concerns, their concerns about their investments. We don't want to see anything happen to these investments. And we know that Ms. Moore here, there's some other quarries here. We have another quarry that is located near our middle school. We get complaints all the time about that quarry. Trucks damage our roads. The blasting has damaged foundations. Lawsuits have been filed, lawsuits have been settled, and there is no course of action. Our concern is the same thing could happen here. There could be a slip-up, there could be a problem, there could be an issue, as in a lot of cases, and there could, you know, whatever incident might happen, it's, oops, we're sorry, you know? You can sue, you can do this, but, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. You know, the easy way out is just to probe it and then just move on. But, you know, we work for the people, y'all work for the people, and we'd like to see you have a public hearing to hear from the public and to represent the public and do the public's wishes. And our request tonight is, again, on behalf of the city government and the people that we represent here in Oxford, that you decline permits for this project. And again, the city of Oxford is in complete opposition to this project and has passed a legal resolution to oppose it. Thank you.
Mr. Terry Payton. Following Mr. Payton will be Walter Branning.
I don't have a, I don't have anything written either. I came kind of, you know, prepared, but my name's Terry Payton. I have a few businesses here in Oxford. I have a, we have a home within a couple miles of the site, the proposed site. We bought a 70-acre farm a couple years ago. It has a low sitting area within a couple miles of the site, just off of 78 and 431. You know, there's been a lot of concern, obviously, since we bought that property when we heard this. I don't know all the detail, you know, we're not technical on this type of stuff. I've read what most of these people have read, but I've got a lot of concern. You know, I think one of the biggest problems with this is the awareness of it all. You guys have made it clear of what your boundaries and your responsibilities are and what they are not. You made it clear that you guys are not responsible for zoning, and my question is, who is? You know, it's a big problem to us. This is something that I would think, I think that a lot of folks would agree upon in saying that it was rolled out probably a little too fast, if not a lot too fast. We just, there's a lot of unanswered questions, there's a lot of concern, and we have no, when you guys show up, we're here. When you guys are gone, you're not. And I think one of our biggest questions is, who's gonna be? You know, who, is it our representatives? Is it the city councilman? Is it the zoning department? Is it, I know this is split between counties, but there seems to be a lack of responsibility here. Who's responsible? When things go, who's gonna represent us? You know, I know that's one of the things that I'm concerned about, is when things do go wrong, who's responsible? You know, I was just in the bathroom when y'all called my name. A gentleman brought up a good point, you know? When you go to, I'm guessing there's a bond? These are things we don't know. I'm guessing, does ADEM do a bond with people, you know, like Aldott does a bond? You know, what is the bond? What's the size? I'm sure you can look all this stuff up, but we're just commoners. We're just people that have questions, and two months ago is when we heard about this. And so, you know, that's from my standpoint, it's kind of where I sit, as a member of this community who has invested in it, continues to invest in it, knows a lot of the people that are in the surrounding community, the homes that back up to it. These are good people, and they've spent their life preparing for, you know, preparing for where they're at now. And so, we just want accountability, and we feel like, was it ADEM's fault that the accountability failed? Probably not. Y'all did y'all's job, I'm guessing. Is it a local official's fault? I don't know, but that's what we, that's what I think the brakes need to be pumped and so that we can, we can get those questions answered. And so, you know, like, once again, when you guys leave, there's a lot of, there's talk online, and there's a lot of back and forth, but there's just, there's just so many answers, and again, it was, it was not long ago. So, you know, when this stuff happens, again, I've got some of the same questions. When the roads are broke, when the blasting happens, when the low area on my property starts, when fish start dying, I know who to call, but who's responsible? And who's gonna fix that? Who's gonna come in and dig? Who's gonna come in and clear? Is it gonna be the company? These are, they're all questions that we just have for whoever can answer. Don't know who that is here locally. If you guys can help us understand who to turn to when y'all leave, I sure would appreciate it. Y'all have a good day.
Next speaker is Walter Branning. And after Mr. Branning will be Kathleen Kirkpatrick.
Good evening. I'm Walter Branning, and I'm here representing my family. I'm an adjoining property owner. I own right at almost 23 acres, and my property line adjoins Pillar Holdings along Chocolaco Creek for, I actually don't know the footage, it's a pretty good bit. And I know that y'all have to work within the standards that y'all are set, but I would encourage y'all to look very closely at it on approval or what regulations are needed to, because this quarry is not in isolation, and it's right in our backyards. You know, it's where we play in the creek, where my little girl plays in the creek, where my nieces and nephew play in the creek. You know, that's where we spend time, is right where Outflow One is. You know, so anything getting dumped in the creek right there, we're gonna see it. Now, I know it may get diluted down the road, but right on us, it's not, it's gonna come out pure, you know? If, I know there's gonna be settling ponds and everything, it's gonna catch everything. There's so much that we don't know, and so little has been told to us, and Mr. Taylor's right, you know, a lot of it is taken, having to trust somebody that you don't know, especially when you're getting information third-hand. You know, I find out that this is even happening from a neighbor, that I'm about to be severely impacted, and it's gonna affect property values, it's gonna affect even our quality of life. When we're having to hear a crusher run all the time, you know, it's gonna have an effect, especially when I'm working from home, or my little girl, or my wife at home. So I just really encourage y'all to look closely, because it is going to affect a lot of people. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathleen Kirkpatrick. Following Mr. Patrick will be Senator Keith Kelly.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Kirkpatrick. I am an environmental engineer. I'm here representing the public. I will, as I mentioned, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for Cusa Riverkeeper, but I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and the environmental movement and the people y'all here with me this evening. There's been discussion of a variety of different impacts, and I understand that ADEM's current charge is to consider permit limitations and permit requirements and enforcement. But we really need to be mindful as citizens and as responsible state agencies in your case of the cumulative impacts. It's not just one thing. It's not just air impacts, it's not just water impacts. We've heard tonight about impacts that are very likely to water, to the environment, to cultural resources, to people's land and their livelihoods, and the quality of their life and the value of their property. And my overriding question tonight is, if not ADEM, who is ultimately accountable for the accumulation of this multitude of impacts in making this decision? Thank you.
Senator Keith Kelly. Following Mr. Kelly will be Janet Smith.
My name is Keith Kelly. I'm the senator for this district. And first of all, I want to And first of all, I want to thank A.D.M. When we first heard about this, we made the call and requested the extension for the public hearing. And we thank you for granting that so that you could hear what the citizens had to say. We've heard a lot of issues come up tonight, a lot of things to think about that maybe we didn't think about before. We've heard everything from endangered animals to groundwater, dust, all sorts of things. I know that A.D.M.'s got a job to do and we applaud you for doing that. We also acknowledge that the federal funding that A.D.M. gets is designed to try to keep us safe. And so, we thank you for trying to do that as well. We understand that you've got guidelines you've got to follow. But tonight, you've heard from the people. You've heard what the people want. Doesn't sound like there's anything personal going on here. It's nothing against the ones wanting to put into quarry. It's nothing against being pro-business. It's their concerns about their livelihood, where it's located, and their lifestyle, their quality of living. You've heard the city government speak to what their concerns are. You've heard the actions that they're taking. We ask you to take their actions to heart, listen to what the people have said, and do what you can to help these people get what they've asked you for. Thank you.
Next is Janet Smith. After Ms. Smith is Alan Dias.
Hi. My name is Janet Smith. My husband and I recently moved to this area. I grew up in Alabama in Birmingham and spent 30 years in Florida. My husband and I just decided to come back home and we chose this area because, excuse me, because it's such a beautiful area. We purchased our house inside a ridge about six months ago and just recently heard about this quarry. If we had known about the quarry, we would not have moved to this area. Chihaw is a gorgeous state park that I love to go to and take all my grandchildren to. It just saddens me to think that this is happening and all these people here are against it. I love Alabama. It's a beautiful state and I'm glad to be home. But I'm hoping that the state will look at the quality of the lives of the people here as opposed to money. I think that's what this needs to be addressed. My husband has severe C.O.P.D. Again, if we had heard about this quarry, we would not be here because it would definitely impact his health, may impact selling the house that we just purchased and relocating. So, please think about what it means to the people because we do love it here and it is such a beautiful place. Please don't run it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alan Dias. And then following Mr. Dias will be Mike Larson.
My name is Alan Dias. I work for Homeland Security Environmental Protection Specialist. I work with A.D.M. frequently. I'm sorry, can't hear me now? So, I work for, I work with A.D.M. frequently. I'm an Environmental Protection Specialist, NEPA, Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act. I live inside a ridge. I have a home inside a ridge and we have one on Buckley Bridge Road, which is both within about a half mile of the proposed construction site. The deleterious effects that this construction site will have can't be foreseen for years to come. I have geotechnical background for 23 years plus for, you know, both seismic activity and things like that. So, there's no telling what kind of damage this will do to our houses, our foundations. The slippage of most of our houses up inside a ridge, we're all on slopes. And so, any seismic activity, half those houses are going to like slip towards an embankment which will slip off. And not counting like the fact that some of the other guest speakers announced, you know, about wetlands and things like that and endangered species. There's a lot of protected species. We're right on the national forests there. So, there is so many things that can be impacted by one site. Now, I, I don't know what A.D.M. did back in the day, but I'm sure that you guys had some involvement in, you know, Eastman and Monsanto, didn't you? You guys probably didn't even think about what the consequences were back in the day about then, but like hindsight, I imagine that A.D.M.'s like, oops, my bad. So, you know, I mean, it's like if you don't look at it in the forefront of your brain and then you try to play catch up 20 years later, the impacts are so greatly. But what about the company? Like, is there any guarantee that they're going to reimburse the homeowners for the loss of the equity in their homes and the impact that it has on all of our property values or anything like that? There's no telling. I mean, like, I've done seismic investigations, you know, we do monitors. There's been none of that done. No one's looked into any kind of impact, any kind of seismic, because no one's been doing demolition. And you know, I've been in areas where, you know, they've done fracking and things like that. And so, the fracking, there's a 70% increase in lymphoma in the areas where they do fracking because you have aquifers and things like that and the materials that come up through the soil. No one has looked into any of that because you guys have never done that in this area. And so, those kind of things, those are 20 years in the future, but by then, it's impacted all of our children, all of our families and everyone else. And about the homeowners, can you give us any guarantee? Are you going to write us a check? Are you going to give us like a $300 billion guarantee that like if our homes lose value or what impact you have? You know, the, like you said, you mentioned the M.P.D.E.S., National Fluid Discharge Elimination System. The trucking that goes along those routes, they're going to run that mud and stuff. You know, you've got Stormwater Prevention Program. So, the SWIP is not going to cover that. That may cover onsite, you know, mitigation, but it's not going to cover the roads, the damage to our roads and all those kinds of things. So, there's so many things that haven't even been addressed and it's like two months and you're into it and the company's like, yeah, but I got you. No, you don't. You don't got us. And A.D.M.'s supposed to have us. You guys are the ones. You guys supersede NEPA and the national government. So, you guys, it's your job to protect us, the homeowners, the families and all that. Just look into it. There's got to be, it can't happen in two months. You can't issue a permit to these people without having done any investigation. So, I ask you just consider that. Don't, just don't issue any permits. Watch out for the homeowners, like all of our houses, all of our equity, our children's futures and all that. You can't know, how'd that work out for Monsanto and everything else? So, look at the future, not today. Don't issue the permits. Thank you.
Larson is our last speaker. If anyone else would like to submit to speak, please make sure to register at the table outside and we'll wait for you to come in and speak. But as, as it stands now, Mr. Mike Larson is our last.
Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Mike Larson. I've got kind of two concerns. One of them has not been mentioned. There's been lots of scientific stuff here that has been mentioned tonight that I could not hold a candle to. And I agree with all of it. I have had a home on Logan Martin Lake for, for four and a half years. And I know that this is going to impact what's already out there in a, in a environmentally challenged area already. And how is it going to, I haven't even heard any answers to this. How is it going to affect Logan Martin Lake community as well? Chocolaco Creek, on any given day, you can pull up and find out if it's even safe to swim near the Chocolaco Creek. Now, we're talking about putting more discharge into Chocolaco Creek as well, which can seriously impact the whole region. Secondly, I have a mother who has a home here in Sunny Eve. My background has been construction and more specifically in the last five years, also a foundation professional who repairs foundations. I have personally had to repair foundations from blasting, temporary blasting of putting in a road or a construction site where blasting was needed to be done. We're talking about blasting now that is going to be going on for years. There will be, there will be fallout. There will be side, side effects. And it's already been mentioned and the concern is out there. Also concerned is, as I understand, the way often or much of the permit is written, that there's very little monitoring, if any, other than self-reporting. And that is a big, big concern to me and to all of us who live here and call this home. It's almost, you know, just to bring some common sense to the table, it's almost like putting the fox in charge of security of the hen house. And all of us here with our hen houses are pretty much concerned. So, we just want to, and I just want to please implore A.D.M. and those of you who are elected and put in place to protect us and to protect our interests, to consider doing so and slow this thing down at the very least, but just ask that you not pass this permit and keep our, keep our homes where they need to be and the value that we have in our homes and our quality of life.
We're going to recognize Debbie Matthews, the state's name.
I'm Debbie Matthews. I'm a homeowner in the adjoining area for the quarry site. Just very quickly, the way I found out about this quarry was that I was visiting my mother at Carol Ann Oaks. My mother is in memory here there. I was at a special event and I got a message asking if I would like to talk to ABC 3340 about the quarry. I sat down. I had no idea about a quarry. So, I started finding out what was going on and this was like Thursday. The following Wednesday was the end of your comment period that it had been open for about a month. I was shocked. So, I'm here to tell you that your, your system of notifying people is not good and needs to be fixed. So, I will leave that alone. The main thing that I would like to talk to you about impacts people's health and has to do with the quality of air inside their homes. Specifically, radon. I retired from the county extension office two years ago. For about 10 years of my 38 years with cooperative extension, I was a radon educator. We had a pass-through grant from the EPA through the department, Alabama Department of Public Health. I went through numerous trainings, quite extensive trainings over a number of years and became quite well-versed in what radon is and how it impacts people's health. And here's the problem. Calhoun and Clever County are Zone 1 for elevated levels of radon in homes. I happen to know that this is actually true. It is based on the amount of uranium in soils and underlying bedrock that we can't do a thing about. But it gets into our homes through cracks and crevices. Now, it's fine outdoors. It's dispersed. It's not concentrated, but once it's in our nice, well-insulated homes and we breathe it and the level of exposure is four picagrees per liter or more, you're at great risk of developing lung cancer. Radon is the number one cause of lung cancer in those who do not smoke. I have done quite a bit of radon testing. I've looked at results. I have names and addresses of people who've tested their homes in this area. And the only way to fix this is through mediation. Again, it comes in through rocks, through openings in the home. If there's blasting that's going on and you have not previously had a radon problem, you probably need to test your home again to make sure that you don't now have a problem. The problem too is that once this has been mitigated and this costs a couple of thousand dollars to mitigate, if you've got blasting that's continuing, you're going to have, you can't keep fixing the problem. So, it, developing lung cancer can be a really big problem. This is very well documented. It's one of the most well-documented issues ever. So, I, if you don't know about it, please look it up. There is currently, this is National Radon Action Month. The health departments all throughout the state, but especially in our area, they're providing homeowners with free test kits, one free test kit for home. I encourage all the homeowners here who have not tested their homes for radon to do that just to see what your situation is, to see if you have a problem. Because if this quarry happens, blasting occurs, cracks and crevices open in the ground and find, radon finds its way into your home, you know, you need to know what the cause was that probably would cause it. So, I just wanted to make people aware of the concerns about blasting and openings in the earth that would be caused by this, that would allow radon to seep into homes. I might tell you that radon is especially concerned in areas that have karst geology. I went to a special conference up in the eastern Tennessee area and I can tell you that this is a very real problem. And I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Our last speaker will be Colonel Webb. Say your full name, sir.
Yes. My name is Dale Webb. I'm a retired Army Colonel with 34 and a half years' service. I'm a Vietnam veteran and it's been alluded to before, PSTD is a, is a problem. I spoke to Mr. Taylor tonight and he sounds like a really nice man. But if I was having a bunch of subordinates submit me a plan such as this permit, I would kick it back immediately and tell them to go back and do their homework. It has so many areas that potential failures in any plan in the military, and we spend a lot of time working on plans, has a lot of friction once you start forward with your plan. That friction is, there's always something that's going to go wrong. So, I've done a little bit of research. I've talked to several people. I contacted the sheriff to see if there was any noise ordinances that would be blasting. He says, no, not in the county. But he did share this with me. He said he was from Selacaga and they mine a lot of marble down there. And he said he, there are so many sinkholes down around Selacaga. Now, we know there are sinkholes in our area. I live on Legacy Lane, which I'm about a mile from where Mr. Taylor's property is. The other thing that concerns me is, is the blasting. I'm no stranger to blasting. I've heard bombs go off, you know, and when you know they're going to happen is one thing. But when you don't know they're going to happen, they can produce heart attacks and a lot of different reactions. Now, we have an elementary school in DeArmondville, which is about a mile and a half from where this quarry is going to be. And they're very impressionable young people there. And so, when you start getting these detonations, you can develop, children can develop PTSD from being startled and that. And also, we have a, I believe it's a senior living area that is probably another half mile away from the school where you have a lot of seniors that have health issues. And one of the things that hasn't been spoken about here, we're in a flyway for birds. And I know this for a fact because about 1,000 of them visit my house every year, going and coming from wherever they go to. So, that's going to be affected. I just think the seismic activity and the blast waves that come out of this property is going to cause problems. We don't know what they're going to use at this point. Mr. Taylor told me he's, has a contractor that's going to do this. But in order to dislodge this dolomite, which is a very hard form of limestone, it's going to take pretty significant charges to, to blow that out of there. And it's just not one charge. It's a set of sequential charges that go off and to blast it out. And then, most of the times, I read, I did my research, that about 30 tons of rock is displaced when that happens. So, it takes a lot of explosive power to do that and it's going to cause problems. I know I have a home office that I've converted my, part of my garage into and it has a garage door there. When they fire the cannons at Pelham Range, my garage door rattles. When they fire the cannons at Pelham Range, my garage door rattles. So I know, and we're 20 miles away from that. So I would ask the, your department to stop this quarry. I have nothing against Mr. Taylor. I think he has a good plan, but I don't think all the pieces are there. It needs to be nailed down, all the details that these people have asked you about need to be nailed down in the plan, in the permit and enforced. And you can have all the plans you have and all the details there, but if they're not enforced, they're, they're worthless. The other thing that I talked to someone about, and I've got 42 seconds. If it goes through and our properties are devalued, the tax base for Calhoun County goes down because they're going to have to reassess all our property at a lower value and that means we can't sell it for what we probably got in it. So thank you for your time and good evening.
Since there are no other registered speakers, please be advised that the public comment period will end at 5:00 PM tomorrow, Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. All comments must be received at the offices of the department in Montgomery by that time. After all consideration of oral and written comments, the department will make its determinations regarding the proposed permit actions and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening. This hearing is adjourned.